And welcome to Tint Wisdom number 50. I'm Eric and we are in the middle of the coronavirus. So I'm sure everybody obviously knows that, how could you miss it? And what I wanted to do today, the reason why I called this a town hall tint wisdom is, you know, I wanted to take today's 50th tint wisdom as an opportunity to kind of, you know, let the topic be the most important one right now, which is what's going on with this virus, but more specifically how it's affecting the window tint companies. So, you know, I think the best way to describe what's going on is a lot of uncertainty. And you can see that in the Facebook groups, for example, amongst the window tinters. Because when there's, there's quite a few posts about, you know, how is everybody getting through these different times? And what's everybody doing to prepare and how's everything going? And you really get two drastically different answers to this question that's affecting everyone, one way or another. They're saying, "We're extremely busy," or they're saying, "We're extremely dead." And there's not too much in between. So what I hope to accomplish on today's video with everybody is to get a better idea from those, you know, obviously in the comments and watching, some of the things that they're experiencing, any questions they have, anything that they've done that maybe is leading to why some of these shops are busier than others. And, you know, we can kind of address these, we can work together. I certainly don't have all the answers. I do have my perspective on things that obviously I will be giving. But, um, really what today's about, I feel like is everybody working together, everybody contributing to the conversation. So as a community, we can affect, uh, we can affect, like, make a better outcome for ourselves. So I wanted to jump right in. And the first thing I wanted to point out, and this is kind of outside the window film world, but there's a lot of crossover. And it's really an example of, you know, where you have to give credit where credit's due. And credit is due to Ceramic Pro. So Ceramic Pro last week, I believe sometime last week, filmed a video, edited it, put it out along with text, and they shared it amongst their dealers. And the purpose of this video was, it was highlighting one of their products that, it's not a new product, it's a product that they were currently selling, but it highlighted how that product is used for sanitation of vehicles. And, you know, the reason I, I'm pointing this out, I mean, it's definitely just a badass video, but the real reason I'm pointing this out is because, you know, Ceramic Pro saw what was coming, right? And, you know, you can get in two different modes. You can get into the like squirrel who's gonna hold on to their, hold on to their nuts and they're going to, you know, stay by their tree. Or you can become the squirrel that, you know, leaves those nuts in search of more nuts. And hopefully, when you, you know, you risk losing the ones you had, but at the end of the day, you may have more. So what I'm saying is you're either gonna be the squirrel who, you know, uh, rich, like retracts in times like this, or you're gonna be the one who says, "I'm gonna, you know, go out and I'm gonna do what I can to make the best of it." And Ceramic Pro sprung into action. They filmed the video, they, you know, they're providing a service that is actually helping people during this time. So like, it's a way that as a detail shop or a tint shop or, you know, that carries Ceramic Pro, it's keeping, it's, it's keeping services that are, um, or it's bringing to light services that can be so valuable to consumers right now. And it's providing consumers with a service that they desperately need. Because just as an example, I mean, you may be thinking, you know, "How dirty is your car on the inside?" And so on, but like, think about how many thousands and thousands of people in each city do ride shares and drive ride shares? And how many people go in and out of those ride shares? And how much bacteria and who knows what can accumulate in those ride shares? So as a ride share driver, like you're going home to your family every night, and you're potentially bringing whatever came through that car into your household. So the idea of not only decontaminating the vehicle, but providing it with a product that continues to provide those antimicrobial effects after the fact, that's a really valuable service that we can't really underestimate how much of an impact something like that is. And so to me, that's, that's really like the ingenuity of a business saying, "Hey, this is the market, this is what's going on, what can we do that, you know, betters our business, betters our dealer's business, and betters, you know, the consumers and their, you know, quality of life or whatever needs they're looking for." So I just wanted to highlight that. I'm sure you could find the video if you're curious, um, by going to their Facebook page, Ceramic Pro's Facebook page, I'm sure the video's on there. And it's probably on their YouTube as well. And you'll know it when you see it because you'll see Adam from Five Point Detailing out in San Diego wearing a full like hazmat suit, getting inside the car. And, um, and you'll see it from there. And he's demonstrating the product as well as, um, like putting like steam through the vents and so on. So check that video out. You know, again, circling back to the reason I bring that up, and I feel like, you know, it's noteworthy is, you know, some dealers, some window film dealers also do carry Ceramic Pro and other similar products. Some don't. You know, if you do and you carry Ceramic Pro, then if you haven't seen that video, head over there and spring into action, because I really think it's gonna work, not only now, but also in the future after this chaos is over and passed. And then, you know, it's, it's another reason that if you're one of those dealers who may be held on to just being window tint exclusive, you may look to expand your services. Because, you know, in times like this, like, that's not a bad service to be able to offer if, if as many people in the area aren't getting window film as you need to stay afloat. So, you know, I just, I really, really commend that company for being able to put out such a high-quality video in such a short amount of time, really thinking on their toes and providing relief for their dealers in that way. And I just feel like that, you know, should be an example, not only an example, like an example for manufacturers to take sight of, an example for, you know, as a window film dealer to say, "Hey, this is, these are things we can, we can, you know, we can think of and do for our dealers as well, or our customers as well, as well." So check that video out. And one other thing that I thought was a great idea, and I actually saw this from a non-window film-related company, but basically they sent out a mass email and put it on their Facebook. And they said, you know, "During these times, like, if you can, please support your local businesses. Um, you can purchase an online gift certificate with our business and save," I think it was like 15 or 20%, "you can use it in the future and like whenever you want in the future, and it won't expire." So, you know, that's a way that, there are people out there who are thinking right now, "Okay, you know, this sucks, uh, but it's gonna pass, a couple of weeks from now, it's gonna pass." And if they're seeing the opportunity to save 10 or 15 or 20% on window tint that they know they need and they're gonna get, like, that, you know, that could be a great transaction for them. And it's a great transaction for you as a business owner, because you're able to bring in money from your home through the computer, and your customer is able to give you their money from their home through the computer or phone. And it's a win-win for everybody. So if that cash flow is gonna help bridge you through a slower week or a slower couple of weeks, it may be worth giving up a little percentage. You're, you're giving a value to your customer, you're locking them in, and you're getting the cash flow you may need to make payroll. Um, or just feel comfortable, or whatever it is. So I thought that was a really great, a really great strategy during these times. Those are two that I picked up from other companies, but I'm sure there's a lot of them. And if there's anything that you've seen, just throw it in the comments, because I feel like these are the kind of things that, uh, whether you benefit from the specific comment or you kind of benefit from a combination of the comments, or you kind of tweak it to your own thing, it's this kind of thought process that leads to the, you know, the big breakthroughs that can have a big impact on your business. So I wanna touch on thought process real quick and then we'll move on. But, you know, I, I can only offer you my own opinion and, and thoughts on things. And I'm not gonna give you an opinion on what's gonna happen. What I'm gonna give you an opinion is, uh, is I wanna give you my opinion on how I think you should be handling what's happening. So what's gonna happen, I don't know. And neither do you, and neither does anybody that you're talking to. Nobody knows. And that's why this is a time of uncertainty. So in a time of uncertainty, I feel like it's best to focus on the things you do know, the things you do have control of, over. Now certainly you wanna take precautions. And, you know, some things are gonna be out of our hands, like if the city closes down all the businesses, that's certainly gonna be a stressful situation, and that's happened in many cities. So, you know, I, I'm not saying you're gonna ignore this. I'm not saying you're not gonna feel some pain from it. I'm not saying that at all. But what I'm saying is, when it comes to what you choose to think about and what you choose to do with your time, there's, you know, there's a couple big drastic differences between going on Facebook and reading what's the newest article on what somebody predicts is gonna happen with the coronavirus, whether positive or negative, or whether reading, you know, memes about it being the end of the world or it being an overreaction. You know, you can focus on your business and you can feel empowered and you can get some things done. And you can make sure that, you know, this period, however slow it may be for you, if it is, and, you know, this period that may put you in a little bit of debt, you may have to put things on credit cards, or who knows, to make payroll and, and keep everything going. This period that may be viewed upon as negative can actually be you being pulled back in a rubber band, because you're improving your business, you're working, you're planning for when things get back to normal. And when things do, you're going to shoot like a rubber band being pulled back. So, you know, this period can set you back, or it can spring you forward. And that's just gonna depend on what you do at this time and how you, you know, how you deal with it. I can tell you, trying to figure out an uncertain future isn't gonna work. It's just gonna leave you in a state of probably, I'm guessing, anxiety. Because, you know, it's, it's truly uncertain. You really don't know. And no one that you speak to or have access to there, I think exists, actually knows what's gonna happen. I can't imagine how, now certainly some people can predict, are gonna predict it correctly, because at this point, everybody's predicted every possible scenario. So something will happen, and somebody will have, you know, suggested that was, predicted that was what was gonna happen. But you understand that they didn't really know in advance, they just happened to, you know, get it right. So with that said, when there's no answer out there to, you know, fulfill your question, it's better not to seek that question, it's better to kind of head in a different direction. So don't let yourself get caught up in a state of panic during this time. Focus on what you have control over, focus on, you know, the people you need to take care of and, you know, what you can do for your business, for your family, to protect it, to make sure everything's gonna work out. And, you know, here's the thing, I can promise you, everything's gonna work out. Um, it may, you may feel some pain, we all may feel some pain. It could be a week, it could be a month, it could be a year, who knows what it could be? I don't know for sure, and no one knows. But something will happen and, you know, it's better to see what happens and take everything day by day than live in a potential negative future that may never actually turn into reality. So that's that, I, I won't touch on the, uh, on that, uh, moving forward, because I really feel like, you know, there's no shortage of predictions on the internet. That's basically what everything is. It feels like clickbait in both directions. And, you know, um, let's move on. So... Alright, so, um, let me pull up the comments. I realized that I did not have the comments up and, uh, see what's going on. Just give me one second here. And thank you all for watching today. Um, I know, I was just texting with a tenter and, um, he said he wasn't able to make the live because of how busy he was. And I wanted to just be like, "Can you tell me really quick before the Tint Wisdom, how you're so busy?" Because that's gonna be the topic today. So, alright, let's jump into the topics. David, "Nice to see you through thick and thin, till death do us part. Hope all's doing well." Everything's, uh, everything's pretty great, you know, um, I mean, certainly not ideal. I, I look forward to this passing, it's definitely affected, you know, my life. And, but it is what it is, and I wanna make the best out of every day. Um, I hope everything's great with you as well. You know, um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to get a haircut. Uh, the businesses are closed, but if that's, if that's the biggest problem of the day, it's a great day. So no big deal. Hey Betsy, thanks for watching and certainly hope everybody's doing well during these times. Jamal, thanks for joining in. Patrick Fransco says, "Agreed with example. You have to adapt to the realities on the ground and make the most of the situation." You absolutely do, um, you absolutely do. You have to look for the opportunity. If you have people sitting around right now and you're able to pay them, hopefully, you know, this can be an opportunity to deploy those people to do things in your business that you thought you never had time for, you never had, uh, you never had resources for. It's time to better training, it's time, but you know, it's really time as a business owner to step up and show your employees. If you're, and I'm just in this case speaking to business owners, but it's, it's a time to step up and show your employees what kind of a great business you are. And what I mean by that is, you know, paying your employees a great salary when things are great is certainly commendable, appreciated, and who would ever say anything bad about that? But, you know, during hard times, how you handle those times and how you take care of your employees, that's what really speaks. That's your opportunity to build a lifelong relationship with your employee. That's your opportunity to do something you can feel like extra good about, because, you know, you're taking care of somebody. Like, an employee, uh, you know, is, is giving their days and days and days to you every week after week, month after month, to, you know, earn a living for themselves and their family and hopefully do a great job for your business and your family. So the point is, everybody relies on that business. So everybody's tied to that business. This, as you rely on your employees sometimes through busier times or hard times, this is time where, you know, people are gonna rely on each other. So, um, you, you definitely, you know, you definitely, this is not a time to fire anybody. Uh, this is not the time. Now, if, if things go bananas and it's just the worst economy ever and so on, well, you'll have time to fire people if you have to let go of people. And, you know, anybody that's working for you now, they're not confused. They know that potentially their job may be at risk if they see that business has slowed down or the shit, city has shut down. So, you know, they're not gonna be confused if you let them go in two months from now or in a month from now. But right now, what you need to do is do the best you can with the situation. And don't jump the gun, because, you know, think about how difficult it is to build team members on, uh, in your business. And think about how quickly something like this can improve and change, and things can go in a perfect direction and everything go back to normal. And, you know, an extra week, an extra two weeks of paying your staff or an extra month of paying your staff, you figure it out, one way or another, put it on credit cards, do what you have to do, that can make all the difference moving forward. And, you know, at the end of the day, you're doing, I feel like, what is the right thing? You're taking care of everybody. Um, and you're putting yourself in a position to bounce back from this pretty well. Uh, if you go that route, you kick your employees to the curb, whether you get them back or not, they're not gonna forget about that. So, um, you know, you're not necessarily positioning yourself to rebound from this as best as possible if you jump the gun to those type of drastic measures. So just do what you can and, um, and yeah. Jason, thanks for joining. So Jason actually sent me a package, and I'm gonna go get that package real quick. So this box is from Jason, I picked it up today. And, uh, I don't know what's in it, but I figure we might as well do an unboxing, right? Okay, so I broke the pen. You got a lot of tape on this, Jason, a lot of tape. Must be good. Alright, so this is our first Tint Wisdom unboxing, live unboxing. A plus for packaging, nothing, I mean, this is really good. Really, really good. And, um... Alright, so I'm gonna show you the cup in a second, but I really wanna see these towel, like this towel, which I didn't actually know what was coming. So let me just put this up. So this is Tinter, so that's Jason's brand. And, um, yeah, Jason, thank you so much. This is such a nice towel. This is the first time I actually got to feel these in person. And, uh, thank you. Let me, uh, show you this cup. So this is a Tinter cup, Tint Whiz Tinter cup. Thank you for all the support. So Jason, I mean, thank you so much for sending this. Um, there's a shirt. What am I gonna do with the shirt, right here? So Tinter shirt in purple, perfect for my next Tint Wisdom, because one of the things about Tint Wisdom is I do have a green screen behind me, so I can't wear anything that has green or blue on it, because it'll pick up in the green screen. So purple and white is perfect, grays are perfect, blacks perfect, but anything with green in it, I can't, just can't wear, and some light blues I just can't wear during Tint Whiz. So, um, I'm gonna get, Jason, I thank you so much for this. I, I mean, I already like am hugging this, uh, microfiber, but, um, I'm gonna get with you after this, and we're gonna figure out a giveaway to get, you know, these or a version of these, um, in everybody's hands. So let's see, um, I don't know. If you comment in this video, we will, um, send you a towel, how's that? And, you know, we'll just contact you to get your address. So comment in the video, um, you know, one per person type of thing. And I hope we, um, get a lot of them out there. So that's all you gotta do. If you left a comment, that's good enough. And, um, we'll just shoot messages to everybody to get everybody's addresses and get these out here. Um, that just worked out perfectly, because I picked up the package today. It had been in my mailbox for quite a while. And, uh, and yeah, that, that's awesome. So everybody gets towels and I might sleep in this tonight, because it's so soft and big. So Jason, thank you again. And let's get back to the comments. See, so... See, Mike Powell said, "I love it, I'm working on these two as we spoke earlier. Thanks for the words earlier last night." Absolutely, Mike, I love talking to you, you're just such a nice person. And yeah, so thank you for your friendship. And, uh, Jordan said, "We haven't slowed down one bit in these times. Um, we're also in a small town in Arkansas." So that's interesting, because I could see being in a small town, people thinking, "Okay, we're gonna be dead." And then there's the flip side, which is like, a small town may take no precautions, because they have very little chance of any sort of likes, you know, they don't really have tourists and it's just them, and they probably not gonna have any problem with this. So that's interesting that small towns not really affected. I know in LA, they've closed down most businesses that aren't like food and gas. So even like barber shop, like I mentioned earlier, not allowed to cut hair. They're driving around and ticketing businesses that are open when they're not supposed to be. Um, Andrew said, "Slammed last week, dead this week." And then Mike Powell says, "As of now, I'm still four to six a day because of slowed down slightly." So slowed down slightly is not bad at all. And Mike, you're in a pretty small town as far as I know. And... See here, and I've reached the bottom of the comments. So as far as questions go, not all the comments, but, um, you know, we can put up like, uh, Jamal asking Jason for where his hookup is, that's a great question, Jamal. Dave, "David badass, I agree 100% badass. Not only towel, but I really like how the shirt feels, and I'm a really picky t-shirt wearer." There's Harry, "Very nice, I agree." I don't even think very nice says enough, but I know what you mean. But it's even nicer in person, is what I mean. And, um, so we'll move on from the comments. So... After this one. So Dean said, "You need to wash your hands after opening that box." So funny thing, I've been trying to be really careful about what I touch, you know, just doing the best I can, like, I don't wanna get any, I don't wanna get, even if it's just like the flu, even if it's less than the flu, I don't wanna get it. So, you know, obviously like everybody hates getting sick, but I, I just feel like I especially hate getting sick. I hate laying in bed and being in pain, like aching. So anyway, what got me yesterday was forgetting about the gas pump. So I pumped gas in, in my Jeep, and then I got in, I immediately grabbed some food and put it in my mouth. So I hope I don't, I'm not a carrier of the coronavirus, but I definitely have no problem staying home for as long as needed to make sure that I'm not. So, yeah. Mike Powell said he is in a small town, population's 15,000. So I would imagine another thing that's affecting is just like, what side of the country you're on? It feels like the west coast might be a little more precautious. I know San Diego just shut down the city. And, um, whereas like the east coast, I feel like they're kind of more like, like Texas, I feel like they're just gonna like shoot the virus with their guns. You know, they're probably not worried about it at all. And, uh, just kind of depends where you're at. Mike Powell said, "What you have done in the emails we've received, that's amazing, amazing. Please applaud to these two." So one of the things we're doing, uh, one of the things Tint Whiz is doing is just extending, you know, basically until June 15th, anybody can use the app completely free. And, uh, whether you're a paying user, whether you had an old free trial that expired or whether you're brand new, whatever it is, nobody's getting charged, um, through June 15th. And that's just a way that, you know, it's like one less expense to worry about. And also if you do wanna take action, if you're finding yourself at home, it's a great time to learn the app. We're still in support 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So jump in there with any questions. Um, we also released an inventory system in Tint Whiz. You'll see it in there, there's two ways to enter, uh, to keep track of weight. You keep track of weight just by, um, entering your cuts. So just, you know, keeping track of your cuts and, and you'll see it's really, really, really insanely perfect inventory system. Um, you can account for who has the film, when it came in, your cost per square foot and so on. And then one other way you can keep track of film is actually weighing it. So you can, if you know your core weight and you know the full weight of your film, you can enter those two things in, um, with your film information. And then, once you enter that in, from there, you, um, can just reweigh the roll of film. And you'll basically precisely know how much film is left in that roll just by weighing it. So check that out, it's the inventory system in Tint Whiz. If you have any questions, jump in the support. But I think it's, it's the most intuitive feature, I feel like, on Tint Whiz, um, beyond adding a contact, which is pressing the button that's big and green on the, on the front. But like, what I mean is inventory, we spent so much time on this, because we wanted to make it perfect. We wanted to make it something that everybody could use, that felt intuitive, that was just like, just comfortable. So we're really, really excited about it. Um, and, you know, check it out. We'll definitely be doing a Tint Wisdom and some other videos, like, uh, pre-recorded videos on the inventory system as explainers and training and so on. But for now, it's live in there, anybody has access to it, it's completely free. So jump in there and do that. So, um, and then Jason, or and then Mike Powell also mentioned Harry. So Harry's from, uh, he's in here as well, Harry, from Veloce Innovations. And Harry, uh, Harry's company, Veloce, just sent out an email, basically saying that orders above $150, I believe, will be free shipping. They're gonna do some new, uh, cutting down rolls in smaller increments, so that if you do have a job, you don't necessarily have to put the money out there to buy a full roll of film. You can buy just as much as you need, they'll cut it. I don't believe there's any cut charges or anything for you. And then that allows you to kind of buy exactly what you need for the job without having any extra money out there that turns into inventory on the shelves that, you know, again, in an uncertain time, you don't know when that film's gonna become the next project. So that's really cool. And there's probably a couple of other things he's doing, but that, um, is another example of a company looking for ways that they can take care of their customer. And there's no too small or too large way. You know, you just, you look at your own business, your own scenario, and you do that in, as a, as a window film dealer too, as a manufacturer, everybody in business should be doing that. You look at your own business, whatever it may be, and you see how these concepts apply to you and what your situation allows you to do and would be best, and, and you do it, and that's it. So Linda said, "Jason washes hands first." Um, I use rubber gloves pumping gas, yeah, I didn't use rubber gloves. But, uh, so yeah, it just happened, I don't know. I can't even imagine how dirty a gas pump is, like, I mean, just like, I stay away from door handles and then a gas pump, I just didn't think twice, like, disappointing for sure. So, um, Mike Powell said, "We just shut all bars and restaurants, schools and sports." So that's good that they didn't shut window tinting down yet there. And then Liz said, "We're staying busy too, we're also in a small town, Yuba Lindas, or Yuba City, California." So that's west coast, obviously, California, small town. So maybe the thing, maybe the key is the big cities are taking harsher precautions, the big cities with, you know, high den, like, uh, high density of people, taking larger precautions, more extreme precautions, basically to slow down the rate that the virus spreads, hopefully to not, you know, um, overwhelm their hospitals and doctors and so on. That's my guess, but, uh, you know. And David said, "Veloce is always innovating." And Liz says, "It's hard, because I'm a hugger, so it's hard when I'm checking out customers and talking to them and remembering not to hug them." Yeah, um, not like, not shaking hands with somebody or like in your case, hugging. Um, it is kind of like a new, it's, you know, you just keep it on your mind, stay away from people. And it's kind of a win for those introverts out there. Um, it's, it's your time to shine introverts, and I'm speaking to myself, because I'm, I think I'm more introverted than extroverted. So, you know, um, it's not the worst thing in the world. But for yourself, it sounds like you're very extroverted if, if your go-to is a hug. I could imagine that's, um, a little weird. But again, I'm sure it's gonna pass. It's hard to imagine now, because we're just at the kind of, we don't even know. We don't even know if we're at the beginning or the middle or the end. So it's hard to imagine, but it's going to get better, just a matter of time. And then David said, "Get a Tesla, no more gas." That's true, and I wonder if ga, oh, okay, so he's speaking to me touching the dirty gas handle at the gas station. So if it's a Tesla, you'd likely be touching the dirty electric handle at the supercharger station, except if you have your own charger, in which case you'd only be touching your own filth and germs, which we do anyway. So, uh, definitely a cleaner solution as well. And then Jordan said, "Yeah, definitely the handshaking is a tough one for me." Yeah, handshaking, it just feels kind of rude, and like, you don't know, you almost wanna say like, "Hey, so we're not gonna shake hands because of what's going on," right? Like, um, but you, I almost wanna break, call it out, so it doesn't seem like you're just, um, I don't know, not being as respectful, respectful as possible. So... So, it's the first minute of, or the first 30 minutes of Tint Wisdom number 50 just flew by. So... Let's see, what we got here? So there was a quote that I intended to have up, let me pull it up really quick. So Linda said, "Keep plastic gloves in your car." So Linda said, keep plastic gloves in your car. I agree with the root part. Do the chicken wings. The chicken wing would be this. And um, or you could do a fist bump, but I feel like David, a fist bump's too close. Because even a fist bump, if I'm like talking to you while I fist bump, I might spit on you. So I don't know. I think a fist bump's too close if you're really trying to play it safe. Completely. So here is the quote. Um, oh, Jordan said, I still spray it down with my baby shampoo or go for it anyway. So you know, that's another thing. Like if, if you're a business who kind of has this figured out, if you've put things in place. Um, I mean, I know it's kind of, it's obvious. You want to wipe things down, but like you may bring something up that's something that somebody else didn't think about. So that's a helpful thing. Like even if it's just a way you address your customers to build confidence that you're doing, you know, everything you can to sanitize your shop, that sort of verbiage. Um, if you've figured it out, if you've taken the time to write it, sharing that sort of verbiage with your colleagues in the window film industry is just a way that people can copy and paste it. And you know, like, that's just like, you're throwing good, good window film karma out there. When you do that, you may feel like, well, I wrote it. Why should other people use it? But I mean, that's the whole point is like, you wrote it, other people can use it. They wrote it, you can use it. And that's, you know, what's, what's the difference? Everybody working together is going to definitely work better than um. So Liz said, who in the group is one of the people who are hoarding all the toilet paper? I'm curious of that too. Um, for me, uh, what I was worried about, so I happened to buy a ton of toilet paper a couple of weeks ago, and this was just by chance on Amazon. So we had tons of toilet paper, but we had bought it weeks before this, anything of this happened. We had no idea how lucky we were to be buying toilet paper. But for me, I went to the supermarket last night. I was looking for oat milk for my coffee. There's no oat milk. There's no anything other than regular milk. Um, somehow there's regular milk on the shelf, but oat milk and everything else is out. And I just thought of somebody with their fridge full of oat milk and uh, wondered who that was. So I wonder who you are with all this toilet paper and why toilet paper would be such a like giant commodity. I mean, I, I, out of all the things, I just, I don't know. Just doesn't seem like toilet paper would have been, I, I feel like that one just went viral, just kind of like this virus went viral on the internet. The toilet paper thing went viral because as like somebody bought up all the toilet paper somewhere, there's some sort of shortage. It just caused like a panic online and all the memes and everything. And it just caused toilet paper to sell out everywhere. And I can't believe, yeah, as Linda said, um, Amazon's all out of TP as well. So I don't know how that happened, but um, here's the quote. Uh, it is, when faced with a radical crisis, when the old way of being in the world of interacting with each other and with the realm of nature doesn't work anymore. When survival is threatened by seemingly insurmountable problems, an individual life form or a species will either die or become extinct or rise above the limitations of its conditions through an evolutionary leap. And you know, um, you may have to rewind that to hear it again. I won't put you through uh, me reading it again. But you know, it's um, it's a profound one. And I challenge you to think about it a little bit and think about it in terms, not only through, you know, physical survival, but just ingenuity, economic survival, survival, you know, just the, the many ways that what's going on right now has a rippling effect uh, on you, on your family, on how you plan for the future, how you deal with, um, like how you deal with finances in the future. So you know, uh, when things are going great, it's hard to imagine things not going great. And I really believe that this is going to pass fairly quickly, hopefully in a, in a, in, in a day, maybe in weeks, maybe in a few months, but relatively quickly, because we're all going to live, I, I hope we're all going to live far beyond a few months. So I think, I just feel like it's not going to be forever. Okay. We're not, this isn't going to be the end of us. So you know, um, this should be a little reminder as to how drastically things can happen, how things can change in your life and how being maybe tight on money or how important reserves in your business can be to get you through times. Because you can't predict it. Nobody predicted this. Some people might've been right, but nobody knew this was going to happen and when. So if you want to plan for, we talk, you know, people talk about a bad economy and maybe this sparked a recession and so on. Um, whether this sparked a recession or so on, and if this, even if everything gets perfectly better quickly, there is going to be a recession eventually. That's just how the, the, you know, expansion and contraction of the economy works. So you have to plan for the bad time because it is coming. So something great that could come from this is, you know, um, a quick wake-up call, a, a way to remember that, you know, things aren't always good and, and you know, kind of reevaluate the things that are important, reevaluate the security level that you feel comfortable with, the amount of reserve of funds you want to have and the way you want to treat your finances and so on. Because you know, one of the things I, I bring up often because it's, it's really one of the reasons why tint whiz exists was because I was looking for in my own business, something to protect me against the bad times. I thought, you know, I was coming, I had 2008 and that recession fresh on my memory. I lost a lot of money in real estate and business wasn't that good either during those times. And I was young. I was just coming out of college. I was 22 years old. And you know, during that time, what my thought was, I said, you know, I'd rather lose all of this now than lose it later on. Because I have all my life to recover from it and I have all my life to bring this lesson with me, like through all my life. So what I'm saying is this is one of those like little reminders, um, that or I guess what I was getting at was the reason tint whiz came about was because when I was opening the company um, in LA, I was concerned with a possible recession because things were going great. We were growing, we were growing quickly. And I just thought, well, what happens if we spend all of this time growing? And all this hard work growing and then overnight something changes and overnight we lose it. And how long can it take to dig ourselves out of that hole potentially? Because you know, you can, sometimes it's not, you're not going to stay even. You might get behind. And how long does it take for you to get um, from behind, back to where you were before or even forward? So what I'm saying is you don't want to spend 10 years growing your business, two years, you know, going way backwards and then another 15 years digging yourself out of a hole. That's essentially your, you know, uh, career. Uh, as you know, it's like a big part of your career. If you're 25 years old, that puts you at like a 50. If you're 45 years old, that, you know, that puts you at 70 years old. Like there's not, you know, that's a big part of your life. So anyway, tint whiz was created to make your business efficient, to make my business efficient, which now is um, for everybody's business to be efficient, to allow you to hire people and make them, um, well, to allow them, you know, hire people more efficiently, make their jobs more efficient, uh, make, make the need for less people and be able to do more with less, even if it's just yourself. You don't necessarily have to hire somebody because you have a tool that keeps you more organized. So anyway, um, just use this time, one of the, a couple of questions that were asked with the quote was um, who it was. I'm going to read it again, just because obviously if people are asking, it's worth um, saying. So first to answer the question, it was Eckhart Tolle. And um, I'm going to show you the picture that went along with it. So that's the picture. Let me get this, hold on, let me get the um, it's an interesting picture, which is really cool. I mean, it's, it's thought provoking and it's, it's very much like, sorry, I'm trying to align it with the camera. So it's a little blurry, um, can't really clear it up, but it's definitely a freaking awesome picture. And I can put it in the comments and share it with everybody after this. But the quote is, when faced with a radical crisis, when the old way of being in the world of interacting with each other and with the realm of nature doesn't work anymore. When survival is threatened by seemingly insurmountable problems, an individual life form or a species will either die or become extinct or rise above the limitations of its condition through an evolutionary leap. And you know, again, what, just the triggers that go off in my own head, when, when I think of evolutionary leap is I try to think of all the ways that it has like a rippling effect, whether it be the time you're spending with your family, whether it be the way you, you manage your business in the future. It, it just, it's just one of those things where you're going down a path and this shifts the path over in a little bit different direction. And that has all these other effects and so on. And everybody's kind of, you know, doing things and, and making decisions right now and so on. So um, he said, so aliens, uh, no aliens. I, I mean, I'm not saying there's no aliens, but I, I wasn't uh, referencing aliens. But just, you know, um, I do believe in the universe. I do believe that we're, we're taken care of. You can know you're taken care of. There's supposed to be challenges in life. Don't think they're going to be easy. Challenges aren't things that, you know, feel good, like challenges, you can't just think of like challenges that you overcame and, and look back at them and go, wow, those really felt good to overcome them. And then think future challenges aren't going to be painful. So that's the whole thing with challenges. Are you feel that unknown and that uncertainty? And like, that's you going to battle with, how do I deal with this? How do I deal with this? Am I going to, you know, step up? Am I going to um, keep my calm and, and make the best of it? Am I going to, or am I going to put myself through unnecessary panic or fear? And you know, um, just, it's all up to you. So uh, that's that. So aliens, no, no aliens. I don't know if there's aliens. I hope we find out. It would be awesome. If we find out there's aliens, I'm pretty sure then this is a simulation because I can't imagine we're getting lucky enough to live in the time of the internet and aliens. That would just be too much. And I would feel like this has to be some sort of like television show or like simulation. But um, now we digress. So and there's Carrie with the aliens. So failing is the, is the best way to see the best version of yourself. So absolutely, Jordan, this is thousand percent words of wisdom. I'm glad you brought this up because I want to expand on that and say, you know, let's just, I want to, I think everybody's probably in a really great scenario, even if things are getting a little slower right now for your business. I, I feel like at the end of the day, it's only been like a week. If you have your own business and you can't survive a week, like a slow week, then like, you kind of need a little bit of a shaking just to like get your head right for the future. But let's just say things are really bad. And let's just say you're super worried and, and, and things are bad with your business. And maybe it means shuttering the doors. Maybe it means getting a job, like whatever that means. But let's just try to go on, you know, kind of negative outcomes on this. Okay. That can be your defeat. That can be your, your end. That can be your defining the way you define your window tint business or your window tint career. Or that can be a time to regroup. And then you come back with a new source of energy and new source of knowledge and wisdom experience that not many people will have, which is, you know, having to start over and having to learn so many lessons. And you'll be able to take those lessons and you may open a bit, you may like get back into business or things may turn in your current business in a direction that's far beyond your expectations or far beyond what they would have without that little setback. So like, this is definitely like any sort of failing or any sort of hard times, like that is, that is when you learn, that is when you make improvements. It's, it's those kinds of times when you actually like kind of, you pause for a minute. Everybody becomes a little more present and it's an opportunity to kind of say, hey, where am I? Like what am, what, what am I doing right? What am I doing wrong? What do I not want to do? And what I want to do in the future more of? And you know, it's a time to be present because if not, it's very easy week after week to kind of get in this like zombie mode, this routine, where you're just doing the same thing every week, every week. And like, it's moments like this that, you know, certainly it's not like good. You don't want anybody dying or anybody sick. You don't want all this fear and unknown. But at the end of the day, these are those like, I feel like little blessings in disguise where they're like, hey, like, hey, we can, like, how do you treat people? How, how do you treat, you know? How do you treat your competitor down the road? If, if, I mean, just imagine like, just kind of a little scenario, but like you need something from them. Like this is a time to be a community. How do you treat your neighbor? Um, how do you, you know, how, how much do you appreciate your customers? How do you appreciate your employees and so on? Like this is that time. So you know, just take that time to, to just, you know, live in it and, and make the best of it. And you know, enjoy it because at the end of the day, no matter how bad things get, like right now, it's not that bad. Like right now, it's not that bad. So let's live in today, um, because it's not that bad. And don't let yourself get caught up in living in like an imaginary tomorrow that's worse than today. Cause that's crazy. Like at that point, you might as well an imaginary better tomorrow than today and live in that one, but don't live in the worst one. So um, so yeah, Carlos said setbacks are setups for comebacks. I keep that in mind. I mean, that's like, that's like, like perfect quote right there. Setbacks are setups for comebacks. That's like a little bit of a tongue twister, but that's like very powerful, really strong quote. Thank you, Carlos. Carlos is definitely one of those people with a lot of resilience. Uh, I, I would imagine Carlos, I'm curious how everything's going in your end in Texas. I know Houston, I heard was shut down, like as a city was shut down, but I feel like you'd like run through walls um, to make things happen. So I don't worry about you at all. Um, and that quote, I mean, is perfect. Setbacks are setups for comebacks. Put that on a T-shirt. I agree on it, on a tinter T-shirt. So maybe do a little tinter on the front and then setbacks are setups for comebacks. You know, maybe what we'll do is on the towel giveaway, that could be the quote that goes on the towel giveaway. So I actually love that idea. So Jason, if, if that's possible, um, what I mentioned earlier, so this is, this is a dash towel or a door panel towel or it's a, it's an anything you want it to be towel. And this is from tinter from Jason Omleski, Omleski. And you know, know I was getting this and I appreciate that. And what I wanted to do, because I'm in love with this towel already, is I wanted to give it to everybody who watched today and who left a comment during the live stream. So anybody who's left a comment, I'm going to reach out to you and just figure out or check their profile. I'm going to figure out where we can, you know, we're going to get these made first of all. So Jason's got to make these. So you know, got to bear with us on a little time turnaround time. And then I'm going to reach out to everybody, get a list of everybody's um, preferred mailing address and we'll mail you a special edition tinter tint whiz towel, absolutely free. Um, you'll pay nothing, no, you don't pay for the towel, don't pay for the shipping, we're mailing it to you. And what I'd love to put on there, if we're allowed to put that on there, unless it's like some sort of copyrighted phrase, but I'd love to put Carlos's suggest, uh, comment that he left, which was setbacks are setups for comebacks. Because I mean, what a perfect quote to put on a towel, to remind yourself while you're working, while you're maybe having a bad day or whatever it is in the future, or you're having a challenging day or maybe a piece of tint, you've got to pull off the glass and redo it. And to see a quote as far as powerful setbacks are setups for comebacks. I mean, I don't know what else, like I'd love that. So I want to put that on the towel if, if we can do it. Um, and we'll mail one out to every single person who's left a comment here already, just regardless of what the comment was. If you're in the comments, towels coming your way. So so yeah, the what, that counts as a comment. That's all you needed to do, but I appreciate all the comments you left earlier as well. Um, you know, put that on a T-shirt was Jordan's suggestion, which is actually how I just, I, I don't know if I said that or not. But Jordan, thank you for the idea because you're the actual reason why I thought of that. I didn't come up with that on my own, putting the quote. But I saw that Jordan said, put that on a T-shirt. And then I think I started to say it. I don't remember now. But the reason I avoid the T-shirts a little bit is because of the differences in sizes. So you get the logistics of like what size is each person. And then if the shirt runs big or small or it's kind of boxy or it's kind of narrow and so on. I, I just feel like a lot of times shirts don't work out for everybody. So I think a better idea would be let's put it on the towel because then it's a one size fits all scenario. And um, I don't know, I feel like this towel's, I love this shirt, but I feel like this towel's like just the best thing ever. So um, so yeah. So there's Carlos. Let's see, he said, I appreciate your brother hanging in there. Um, like the saying goes, if you fall, land on your back, because if you can look up, you can get up. Man. Carlos with the quotes. So we'll read that again. I appreciate you, but that wasn't part of the quote. Okay. Like the saying goes, if you fall, land on your back, because if you can look up, you can get up. And 1,000%, that's life. I mean, that's a freaking amazing quote, Carl, Carlos. Thank you for dropping the quotes. Um, and then Andrew said, if it's a gildan, it'll shrink at least a size after drying. Then he said, love the towels. And Jason says, I got this guys and girls. Thank you, Jason, because I feel like I just committed to something. Committed you to something and I appreciate you being a good sport, figuring out how to get that quote on there and getting these made. And uh, I appreciate you sending that, all that out to me. It was the towel, it was the shirt and it was the cup. Tinter brand is an awesome brand, um, that Jason started fairly recently, but has like, I just feel like doing amazing things. And one of the things the tinter brand's doing that I think is like beyond exceptional, uh, beyond these products is their tinter tour. And uh, we spoke about that. You can go to a previous podcast with Jason or the one with Carlos and we talk about the tinter tour. And basically, you know, they get up and go to shops and put together um, amazing content, educational, like series, entertainment uh, from the tint shops. And you know, they get in there, they tint, they, they, it's just like an incredible thing. And they do it out of, you know, their own enjoyment for the industry. So we look forward to being a part of the tinter tour as um, you know, as this Corona thing passes. So um, yeah, Jason, awesome, man. Really. Thank you. And Carlos, thank you for the quotes. Cause you know, quotes are, they say like, they say, um, here's, here's a quote that I'm butchering a little bit, but I like the quote. So they say like, uh, like positivity, like the, the quotes like this. They're like a shower. They work, but you need them every day. So you know, yes, it's, a quote isn't going to just like, it's not going to, you're not going to coast on a quote for the rest of your life, but keeping present, keeping those quotes in your mind, uh, finding new ones and then remembering these quotes, they can make all the difference in your perspective, moving forward, your actions today, your actions tomorrow and so on. And uh, at the end of the day, we're all in this together. If things get really bad, you're not going to be alone, uh, no matter what, like you're not alone. Cause if things are really bad, they're really bad.
Uh, no matter what, like you're not alone because if things are really bad, they're really bad for everybody. And if things go great, they're gonna pretty much go great for everybody. So we're all in this together. So uh, let's get it through together, you know, community makes for a better outcome. So I want to thank everybody who joined today. This was, I feel like an exceptionally uh, interactive and great, like positive tint wisdom. I really enjoyed doing it. So um, thank you, Jason. Thank you, Carlos. Thank you, everybody who watched today. Um, everybody who commented, everybody who contributes and uh, you know, let's all uh, just, you know, keep, keep positive vibes with this, work together and we'll get through it. I promise it'll be over before you know it. And we'll do a very uh, and we'll be, you know, back to normal and hopefully ahead of even where we were because we'll all have learned something from this experience. So thank you all. We'll be back this Thursday, same time, same place. Facebook Live, seven PM Eastern, six PM Central, four PM Pacific. We'll see you then. Thank you.